Effective policy oversight and efficient resource management. Quality education now, learning for life. Dr. Orr, are there any changes to the agenda?
Oh, yeah.
And first up, we're gonna talk about the 2017 NSPRA Golden Achievement Award.
So, a little bit different opportunity tonight for some recognition. This summer, I'm gonna start here and say that you as a board know, and hopefully the community knows as well, that we have had a focus on college and career readiness. This summer, the Nelson County Schools were recognized in the form of a Golden Achievement Award from the National School Public Relations Association, recognizing the communications related to our World Readiness Program. So, it's a little bit unusual to pair a communications award with something like this, but the judges evaluated these things, research showing a careful analysis of need for the program, so the World Readiness Program. The research behind the program, the analysis and planning evident in the program, the communication implementation around the program, did we do the things that we were saying that we were doing? And then, is a part of the plan inclusive of an evaluation process? And so, we were judged on those categories and received this national award. The only district in Kentucky, I believe, that won this award, is that right, Tom?
Correct.
So, I wanna say thank you to the folks who really made this happen. And you guys know that Kim Brown and Amber Godey and Tom worked together to do this. So, we have a nice certificate that we'd like to present to them and take a picture with them. If you guys wanna join me, you can. And we give these folks with our thanks. So, congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
You're not taking pictures or change.
Just a dance. Yeah, just a dance if you don't think.
Everybody ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Next up is our operations consent agenda, and this consisted of several documents that was sent to us, board members, prior to the meeting tonight. And I'll need a motion to approve the documents as presented.
Motion.
Ms. Berry made the motion.
Second.
Mr. Norman, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, on our efficient resource management, we have Nelson County Early Learning Center, change orders thirteen through fifteen, and that would be Mr. Hodgson.
Evening. Change orders thirteen through fifteen at the ELC. This project is, as you know, we've discussed many times, a couple weeks of work session, just about completely wrapped up. The paperwork lags behind the actual activity. For the most part, the remaining piece there is the panels for the fence and the fencing around the playground. Just wanted to add that. What we're asking you to approve tonight, again, are three change orders that we've discussed multiple times. We've got a playground edge that was required, change order number thirteen, in the amount of seventeen hundred dollars. That was an Eckers requirement. You've all heard the term Eckers. I know quite a lot are familiar with that. That's a change order we're asking that you'll approve. Change order fourteen is related to, you might remember Tim Wenzel with the BCD. Now, when you have two simultaneous construction projects, and you've got a contractor that's working on both, it's possible, I guess, we learned this time, that the paperwork can get messed up a little bit. And originally, we had a particular change order for framing the drywall assigned to Thomas Nelson. It should've been assigned to the ELC. The total on the above, change order's only three hundred and fifty dollars, but we do have to fix that paperwork with our friends in Frankford, the Department of Education. And that's what change order fourteen is about. And change order fifteen, Robyn Mills with Horizon Engineering asked that, or suggested that we install some riprap at the back of the building for erosion control at the ELC. And that's what change order fifteen is about. It's a little more expensive than the others. The total for change order fifteen was thirty-six-hundred, sixty-three dollars and ninety cents. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. But we're gonna ask that you approve those three change orders for that project.
What is the big rocks?
Big rocks.
Let me ask you on that. So, before they put that rock down, they didn't put any kind of paper or anything to the grass and weeds and things like that for it? Are we gonna have to maintain that?
I am certain that's been done. I wish our folks with our constructors were here tonight, but they attend the work session generally. I can find out and get back to you on that.
Yeah, that was a right hand.
I'm certain that that's been done, but I'll confirm that and get back to you.
Okay, that's fine. So, then, I'll need a motion to approve change orders thirteen through fifteen for the Nelson County Early Learning Center.
Motion.
Ms. Dye made a motion.
Second.
Ms. Berry, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is change orders for Thomas Nelson High School.
Change order one A is the offsetting change order for the three hundred and fifty dollars that we just discussed. Change order six, we're asking you to approve tonight, you might recall, was talking about concealed sprinkler heads in the auditorium that will look much nicer, much more finished. And there was more cost associated with that. We felt like it was well worth it. To emergency, Gene Ray Electric, change order number nine, to add to emergency egress fixtures. Change order eleven, to modify the screen type to match the type used by the district. Again, we talked about all of these in previous work sessions, and had the architect and construction manager here describe these things. Projector, the last two are, excuse me, change order number twelve is related to the projector. You might remember, we talked about the need to change a couple of things related to the projector. And change order thirteen, paperwork area for prior POs, which is also related to change order one A and the previous ones. We make a mistake, we learn, and you get four times the paperwork for a three hundred and fifty dollar change order. That's one thing we've learned through this particular construction project, or these construction projects. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Have we talked about them before? Okay. So, I'll need a motion to approve the change orders one A, change order six, change order nine, change order eleven, change order twelve, and change order thirteen as presented.
Motion.
Mr. Norman made a motion.
Second.
Ms. Dye, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, pre-audit AFR.
Pre-audit AFR, I think, I hope I didn't promise you at the work session that we're gonna have that for you tonight, because we don't. I do have some information to share with you, and I do expect that it'll be finished by the end of this week. Like I shared with you at the work session, though, I rushed through that. We have a couple of staff members that are out, and not that that's an excuse, but it does slow down things. And I think without that, we might've been done in time to present that to you tonight. Do a lot of the information I can share with you. I can confirm that our balance will be growing from the beginning of the fiscal year. I've looked at last year's and compared it to where we are this year with accounts payable and accounts receivable, which are estimates still at this point. We have to get through the entire month of July, and we're about halfway through it. But I can confidently say we'll be adding to the balance at the end of the year versus where we began the year at. So, again, I think we're in solid financial shape. We'll continue to be there, and that's where we want to stay. And again, at the work session, I'm certain we'll have a document for your formal approval on the night of the August work session, which is here in a couple weeks. If you have a specific question about anything related to that AFR, I'll be glad to try to answer it.
Okay. And I'll leave anything on that, so then, just, that's it. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Next up, our safety and caring environment, and Dr. Orr with our preschool program approval.
So, we talked about this a little bit at our work session. Each year, we have to take the description of the program to the Department of Education, so there's a routine process for us to have that program approved. So, that's what this recommendation is.
All right. And I'll need a recommendation to approve the preschool program as presented.
Motion.
Mr. Norman made a motion.
Second.
Ms. Berry, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, pre-audit AFR.
Pre-audit AFR, I think, I hope I didn't promise you at the work session that we're gonna have that for you tonight, because we don't. I do have some information to share with you, and I do expect that it'll be finished by the end of this week. Like I shared with you at the work session, though, I rushed through that. We have a couple of staff members that are out, and not that that's an excuse, but it does slow down things. And I think without that, we might've been done in time to present that to you tonight. Do a lot of the information I can share with you. I can confirm that our balance will be growing from the beginning of the fiscal year. I've looked at last year's and compared it to where we are this year with accounts payable and accounts receivable, which are estimates still at this point. We have to get through the entire month of July, and we're about halfway through it. But I can confidently say we'll be adding to the balance at the end of the year versus where we began the year at. So, again, I think we're in solid financial shape. We'll continue to be there, and that's where we want to stay. And again, at the work session, I'm certain we'll have a document for your formal approval on the night of the August work session, which is here in a couple weeks. If you have a specific question about anything related to that AFR, I'll be glad to try to answer it.
Okay. And I'll leave anything on that, so then, just, that's it. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Next up, our safety and caring environment, and Dr. Orr with our preschool program approval.
So, we talked about this a little bit at our work session. Each year, we have to take the description of the program to the Department of Education, so there's a routine process for us to have that program approved. So, that's what this recommendation is.
All right. And I'll need a recommendation to approve the preschool program as presented.
Motion.
Mr. Norman made a motion.
Second.
Ms. Berry, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, preschool agreement, Central Kentucky Head Start.
So, as you know, we have an agreement with Head Start, so that the seats in their program are filled before we fill the seats in our program. And so, that's essentially what this agreement stipulates, and so, we would ask that you approve that.
All right. Then I'll need a motion to approve the agreement between Nelson County Schools for Special Educational Services and Central Kentucky Head Start.
Motion.
Ms. Dye made a motion.
Second.
Mr. Norman, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, MOA.
The Office of Vocational Rehabilitation supports our transition work with some of our students, and so, this is the agreement that supports that support. They send us financial support, I should specify.
Okay. Then, I need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement, MOA, for transition services between the Nelson County Board of Education and the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation.
Can I ask something?
Yes.
Tell me what we do. The key word here to me is Office of Vocational Rehabilitation. What do we rehabilitate?
So, that's the office that provides the funds for this work, but this is Ms. Harlow's program, where she takes students out on job sites. It also supports some of the work that we do, is students' transition from one school level to the next. Anything else I need to add to that?
What it is, is when we sign the agreement, we can bill for services that she does. So, each time that she either helps us do the bill on a resume, or takes them out to a job site, there's a billing cycle. And then, there's like a menu of what she can bill for, and how much money we're gonna get back. And we've gotten quite a bit of money back this year, so.
Is it based on how many students?
No, it isn't. It's just based on the number of students that she can service. So, we have two people there right now. We have her, and we have Karen Taylor, that are servicing those kids, and they can both bill.
How many kids?
About twelve, I think, for last year.
Are these kids, I'm sorry, students? Are these stu-, where do these students come from? Are they anybody, or are they?
Well, Nelson County High School, and it's Thomas Nelson, or it could be Horizon St., but I don't think we have any from Horizon right now. And there are students with disabilities that qualify for vocational rehabilitation.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Mr. Norman made a motion.
Second.
Ms. Dye, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And then, next up is the Womened Services Contracts Agreement with PC.
As we mentioned, I'm sorry, as we mentioned at the work session, we share a position with Barstown City Schools, and this is the agreement that services that. This is for hearing impaired students.
Go ahead. How many do we have? Just give me a roundabout. How many hearing impaired students do we have?
About seven within the district right now.
Is it all from Nelson County High School, or all over the district?
I don't know. It's all over the district, so she has to travel all over the district.
You have one?
She and I from preschool.
Okay. How many, how often do they get help? Every week, every month, every one?
No, they don't get help every week. The number of times during the week just depends on their IP and how much she's written services for, depending on their need.
Okay, so these students have to have an IP?
Yes, they do.
What are you questioning? Huh? What are you questioning? How do we know, you know what I'm trying to say here?
No.
Does it have to have, do they have to have an IP? If you find, if a teacher, okay, if a teacher finds out that a student has had problems, can she recommend something, or does it have to be through special ed to have an IP?
No, she can recommend to teachers, like for the RTI process, absolutely. She can recommend, but for her to service them, actually service the student, then they would have to have an ID. But they would.
But they would have to, because they'd fall on their ID. They would automatically fall on their ID.
Right. Okay, I'll take your word on that.
They would.
I believe you.
Yeah, no, and so, what this would be, is.
I'm not gonna argue that, but you know what I'm trying to, years ago, I know I'm old, years ago, if a student had problems, they automatically got help. You didn't have to go through special ed, you didn't have to go through, I'm just saying it was a service offered, and it just worked.
Great, well, but I think that the rules have changed. I think there are processes now, and there are state halls that say that you have to do this, 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 when you have a child that's identified with a disability.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Now, the rules have changed. I just wanted to know.
Thank you very much.
Got it.
Was that all right?
That's great.
And this is just here.
Yes.
Is that all right?
So, that's gonna be kinda obvious, yes.
That's what I'm saying. So, there should not be any way that these students should be missed, is that correct?
There should not.
Okay. I wanna make sure that no student is being missed.
Most of our students, we get really early, like in preschool.
Uh-huh. They carry right along. Okay.
And then, we don't turn, I mean, we don't turn away any, never?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good. All right. Then I'll need a motion to approve the agreement between Nelson County Schools and Barstown City Schools for the Nelson County Hearing and Aired Teacher, to provide services to Barstown High School students for a fee during the seventeen, eighteen school year.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Mr. Norman made a motion.
Second.
Ms. Dye, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And then, last one, this is the Community Care Contract.
All right. We talked at the working session about Community Care offering us a PRN for the district that can provide health services to our children and our staff. We were in agreement that that was a good thing when we talked to them. I've talked to her again, Sansa Whitney, that runs it. She thinks she will be able to do DOT physicals for our drivers also. Depends on who they hire, they may be trained, or they will have to be trained, but thought that was gonna be a real possibility, and that she would work with us on the price on that, too, because, of course, we pay for that instead of being billed. Also, another conversation we had is about parents being notified. They do have some forms that we can send home, where they can do some pre-notification of the services they have available, get some permission for the nurse to see them if needed. So, I have a contract that would like approval for with Community Care for the coming year.
Ms. Dye made a motion to approve the contractual agreement for physical health services with Community Care. I need a second.
I'll say it.
Mr. Norman, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate our team and your team working on this.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you. All right. Then, next up is our student and stakeholder engagement, the town hall follow-up, and that is.
So, we got a team.
A little bit everybody. We got a little team.
So, we let this screen get caught. Carla, if you're going to the next slide, I don't have a lot to say about that, I think it speaks for itself.
It is just the cutest family. They're just adorable.
While he's putting that together, I'll just kinda start talking through some of this. As you will recall, we started back in June with a series of meetings, listening to concerns about safety, academics, and culture specifically. The second week of meetings that we held, we moved from listening to those concerns to brainstorming ideas around those concerns, and we're getting pretty close here. The next slide, kind of, will give you a little bit of a reminder of what some of that data looked like. As we went through the listening process, of course, you see those dots where folks identified their priorities. When we came back to the brainstorming meetings, we took those ideas that had the highest priority and that people were most interested in working on, and did some brainstorming around them. We took those ideas and then presented them again to those who came to the meetings at Nelson County High School last week, and went through a slightly more formal process of planning. For the teachers who were involved, and several of them are here tonight, and other staff, there's some familiarity to some of that language that you see there, because it follows the template that we use for school and for the plans, and district and for the plan. And so, hopefully, that gave us a comfortable footing to begin with. So, what we did in this round was to begin some of the more specific planning around some of the work that we would like to see happen, and as we've indicated over the course of the summer, work that we know will need to continue into the school year. So, I've asked Bob and Kim to talk a little bit about the main elements that we planned around last week. And I just wanna point out, these are not completed plans by any stretch. In some cases, they're pretty detailed, and in other cases, they're not so detailed. As we meet with principals, we will be doing that a little bit later this month, we'll meet with principals and our building-level leadership team all together. We're gonna bring those plans to them as they are now, because they will be involved in helping us continue to shape those plans and get them ready for what we wanna see in the school year. There have been some things that we could, if you will, snap our fingers and make happen. You guys were part of that at our work session in adjusting the middle school staffing formula. And there may be other things that will come to that point where we would bring ideas forward for board approval specifically, but then, other parts and pieces of this work will be working through with the school strap in the course of the school year. So, having said that, I will stop for a few minutes, and Bob, talk to you about the things that we're talking about on safety.
Next slide, bro. Safety planning night, I led that up. I'm the safety officer for the district, and as Anthony said, we went through a lot of brainstorming, a lot of ideas over a course of several weeks, and it kinda boiled down to these things, these four major things that people thought would be the most effective in changing our safety in our schools. One was home visit to at-risk students. Talked about having frisky folks doing that, along with support and the principal, and possibly even teachers. When it's these students that are having a lot of attendance issues, having just trouble with behavior, grades, there's a lot of times something else going on at home. And so, they wanna support that, offer support to the parents, offer support at the home that may affect that at school. Another popular idea was a designated dean of students at schools, someone to deal specifically with behavior that's available for that, when often, other administrators are doing what we want them to be doing, supervising and working with curriculum and teachers sometimes don't get to the behavior as quickly as maybe needed to be. So, that was the thoughts of a dean of students. And I'm just running through these, so if you want me to stop and talk about them anymore.
Actually, I do have a question about the dean of students position. What, Mr. Luthers, what, isn't he, doesn't he deal with that?
He's our DPP, and the DPP's, I'm sorry, district pupil personnel. So, he not really dealing with behavior, he deals with attendance, and deals with getting kids enrolled, and, you know, checking if they're coming from right areas, and all those kinda things. So, he works with out-of-area requests, with, you know, but with specific behavior in the school, that would not normally be something Mr. Luthers would do.
And he does do home visits as part of his work?
Yes, more on the attendance side, and we talked about adding some other to it, but, yeah, he does the home visits, and maybe that's where we're tying it together. When we see students with attendance issues, that would be something.
Okay.
And I'm a dean of students position, would that be in addition to the assistant principal's role in discipline? So, this is a new position, or is this just?
That's my assumption from the conversations, but I don't wanna say that necessarily that's so. A lot of the conversation was around somebody that was dedicated to deal with behavior. Now, whether that is somebody that's already in a role in the building to do that, or additional one, that would have to be a conversation that we carried further with the principals and with you guys. It was, the big thing was having somebody that was dealing specifically with behavior.
I think there was examples that the behavior issues were being slow and coming. If a teacher recommended a discipline to a student, that it took some time to get it there, like a day or two, instead of being able to handle it right then.
So, now, they were hung up on the process.
Well, I wouldn't even call it a process. I would say if an assistant principal is needed to do something else, then that's what they do. I mean, prioritize, you know what I'm trying to get there?
Sure.
That sometimes something else is going on when, you know, the student has been referred to the office.
Sure.
But nothing has gone on for a couple of days, because that assistant principal's doing something somewhere else, or I think it's needed somewhere else at that particular moment.
Right, so the response time was a little slow.
The response time was, was not what it should be.
So, it makes sense. That's why it's a plural, right? Dean of students position, so conceivably, it could be two people are designated in this school to back up the principal or something. So, this is just a tie-off, right?
Yes, ma'am. We really, as Dr. Orr said earlier, we're not bringing these to you as recommendations. This is what we mean to do.
No, it's just conversation.
What we're just bringing them to you is, these are the things that we gleaned from our conversations with our staff and with our parents, and we wanna take this further to our principals and just kinda work through some of the details.
I'd like more, that's the future of the work session. I'd like to have more conversation about that.
Yes, ma'am. Third one is add a resource officer position in secondary and K8 schools. I think that one kinda speaks for itself. Some of our parents and staff thought that that would be a good idea. And then, fourth, consistent discipline enforcement across the schools and in the schools, I think. Although, that's the fourth one down, is not meant to be in that order necessarily. I think that was one that came up a lot toward the top, you know, was that consistent. We originally put that as example when we were, if you notice, it's in italics, when we were giving an example to the folks to say, okay, tell us, you know, here's kinda what one would look like, they're going, oh, that's exactly what we need to be doing. So, they wanted to add into it, so that's why we left it there. That's a big part of what people want out of this is consistency.
That was key word.
Yes ma'am. Any questions? We'll talk more about it with the principals, like Sid, and then we'll have them what to bring to you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
On the night of academic planning, the first issue was whole student instruction that we educate the intern child, all of their needs, the essential skills, financial literacy, and then relevant knowledge that they need. We have started that through the World Readiness Program that we have talked about previously. We can do some other things. Amber and I currently are working on a replica of World Readiness for the middle schools, and we will bring that to you hopefully by at least the first of September at the latest. But I hope to get it under control, and we could bring it to you in August at the work session so that you can see that as we're going down through the grade levels. Number two is to create mentorship programs. We are doing that across all areas in the middle and the high schools where we have advisory periods and we have students who meet with their coach or their advisor for seven minutes first thing in the morning so that the teachers can get a grasp of how is a student this morning, you know, did they have a good night? Is there anything that anyone should be concerned about? In the middle schools, we're doing advisor, advisee first thing in the morning. Horizons is adopting this year, they're using 20 minutes first thing in the morning, and that this is the first time that we will have that at Horizons. But we are trying that this year to establish the same sort of activity for those students as well. And then the elementary schools have the one-on-one teacher where the teacher has the same children in a self-contained classroom, so that would be their advocate. But we are doing extra work with the counseling services. Amber is also using some of her time to work with fourth and fifth grade students on number one, on the essential skills and those sorts of things. So we are trying to bridge different methods and use them all the way from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. Number three is to enhance the gifted and talented instruction. As you have been on this journey over the last two years, as we have sort of turned our ship and been turning our ship, we are now ready to go about first. If you are a sailor, I talked to a sailor today to get my terms down, but we have done some things on the port side, and we've done some things on the starboard side, and now we're ready to turn the ship full throttle forward. We have done project-based learning, and that probably is the most innovative program that we had in the district at this time. However, I might be able to tell you of something even more advanced at the office meeting because we're going to work with the University of Kentucky School of Innovation next Monday and Tuesday. We will be in training there. But I say all of that to tell you that yes, we are answering number three to enhance our gifted offerings, and we're doing that through a variety of different methods. ESS transportation came up as a need, and it has not been my experience while I've been in Nelson County that we have had transportation in the afternoon for students to need extra help. I do think that that is a good thing, but each school gets their own ESS allocation, and if they so choose to spend their money for busing in the afternoon, they can do that. So that is an entirely school-based decision as far as a bus transportation in the afternoon for those services. I think in the past it was used as an activity bus and some other things that were not related to academics. But this piece in the academic planning would need to be after school services. So that could be a possibility if the school so chose to do that. And then number five is improve 21st century teaching and learning. As Mr. Morris said, this was what we used as the example to show the group what needed to be done as far as academic planning. And I think all of the elements, one through four, do address 21st century teaching and learning. And we actively have teachers, and I'm so happy, yesterday I sat for a long time, and I know Dr. Orr thought, what in the world is she doing? But I was signing stoppings, and I was signing travel vouchers from our huge number of teachers who volunteered to go to layman foundations training, who went to advanced placement training, who have been training for four days last week. They were in intense training, and this is year two of that. So that's why I tell you that now that we have the laying and foundations training, we have literacy design collaborative, we have math design collaborative, and we have project-based learning. We have all of those tools that our teachers have readily sought to make themselves their teachers. And that all of those have online resources that they can access at a moment that they need a new strategy or something that they can go into those banks and get core content, common core content, or whatever it is that they are searching for, they find the need for. We have all of those things readily available now. So we are ready to go forward and to move our levels of achievement wherever we need them to be. So do you have questions or concerns that I can answer?
I just love project-based learning. I just love it.
You might explain that to project-based.
Go ahead.
Project-based learning is in current research. Students identify something that they're interested in, and they bring that to the teacher, they have a discussion with the teacher. Of course, the teacher is going to give them suggestions and ask them, give them resources and that sort of thing. And then the student takes it upon him or herself with a group of their peers to research that, to follow through with that, to make a model or a demonstration, or they can do a talk, a speech, they can do a tremendous amount of different things to demonstrate that learning and what they learned. We had the opportunity to go to Foster Heights and be invited there when their fifth grade gave their presentations on some new laws during the legislative session in February and March. Those teachers were very wise in connecting that to real-life learning. And so they talked to their children about what's going on in Frankfurt at that time. And so then the students took the mantle of that and decided upon some laws that they would like to see to be enacted. They did the research, they did PowerPoint presentations, and there were in groups of three to five students, presented that to probably 15 people, and we scored those. And then the ones with the highest scores, of course, were going to be put into law. But it was awesome. They had a real brick, they knew what they were doing, their presentation skills were very developed for fifth grade, they had worked so very, very hard. And I can't wait until we get those students over at OKH because the OKH teachers are, were here all day on Friday training for leader and lead so that they can receive the leader and lead students from Foster Heights and take them on through the middle school. So there's really some exciting things as far as academics going on in Nelson County, and we hope to bring those to you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got one more slide here with culture planning. Amber is located in this force, but is not able to be here tonight. So we talked about community buy-in and engagement, making sure that we get folks involved with us. And actually, some of the things that Kim talked about with project-based learning is a really good way to do that. We're on track to have those presentations that she talked about, maybe not just to staff, but maybe to this and its parents as well. And so that's a great way to fulfill the academics and, of course, the culture as well. Creative and foster a growth mindset in all shareholders. I don't know if you guys have seen it, but there's a book called Mindset. It's been out for two or three years now that our staff, our leadership, school leadership study a good deal last year, and several of our books have begun to move that into their classrooms and their working classrooms. And so that was a priority that was planned around last week. And then finally, a table that worked on creating welcoming, caring, school culture for staff, parents, and student belonging. That again was one of those that we kind of modeled through, but that got more discussion that night. So all in all, a good set of starting points for us to move forward from this point. And I just want to say, in closing this out, we had a small number of folks, sometimes smaller than I hoped for certainly, but the folks who came, we had several who came night after night, not just to one topic, but to all of the topics, not just to one phase of the process throughout the course of the summer, but to all of those. And so I see several of those faces here, and I want to say thank you very much. I'm sure there were other things that you could have been doing. So I appreciate you guys being here and our team here investing in that as well. So thanks, and we're going to continue to seek to work, and we'll make that once we get the school year underway, a routine part of the reporting we bring to the board at our meetings.
And we are up with our guest comments. Okay. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of the group you are representing.
Good evening. My name is Matt Reynolds. I live at 409 Marsh Lane, Marsh, Kentucky. As I've stated before, I am a very concerned parent of two children who are currently enrolled in the Nelson County District. My concerns have led me to start an online petition that now has 385 signatures and comments as to why would you not extend Mr. Orr's contract? I'm going to share with you all a few bullet points tonight that I had every intention of sharing at the last meeting. However, I was out of town for work. The first topic I'd like to touch on is the TEL data that Mr. Orr put so much emphasis on prior to and during the town hall meetings. I have three major concerns with the TEL data that are as follows. First of all, why haven't we heard this data before? Is it because the district has been below the state average and remains so in nearly every category? It certainly seems as if the district finally chose to reference the TEL data only when it felt like it can work to their advantage. Secondly, there are no questions, and I comb through this pretty intensely, but I see no questions on the TEL data survey about the staff's feelings, about the superintendent or the district's leadership. It's nothing more than a school-level cultural data, and many teachers see it as not only a report of their principal, but also of themselves. And lastly, in most cases in Nelson County, we're comparing data of principals fired to principals fired. This promotes growth in the data to the public while forgetting about all the principals that have come and gone during the growth cycle. For example, in Nelson County High School, there was a significant growth in the data in 2015, and then we fired the principal. The second topic that I would like to address are the town hall meetings that were conducted. Mr. Orr made it quite clear that most of the information that is presented at these board meetings is anecdotal information, yet he decides to host a series of town hall meetings to collect thoughts, concerns, and solutions from the community. Isn't all that anecdotal information also? These town hall meetings were nothing more than a promotion of diversionary feel-good political tactics. In my profession, much like most professions, if I'm not performing at the level of expectations, I don't get to ask the community to get involved, I don't get to phone a friend, I don't get to ask the audience, but what I do get is fired, and that's my next topic. Rumor has it that there's been some internal decision to not extend Mr. Orr's contract. And if this is true, kudos to you all for doing that. What is right. However, we need to up the ante by not just giving Mr. Orr a nonrenewal, but also releasing him from his responsibilities immediately. I truly hope that you all see that there is no time to waste. Our kids' education and safety is in jeopardy and will remain in jeopardy until we get new leadership in the center office. We have no time to waste. Regardless of what short-term expenses need be made, our children's long-term success is at stake. It's up to you all to do the right thing. Thank you.
My name is John Peterson, and I was a substitute teacher and a teacher in this district. And I'd just like to start off by saying that I really don't like this format because y'all get to know everything that I know, and we don't get to know anything that you all know. So maybe we're beating a dead horse, maybe we're not. My problem, of course, with Mr. Orr, part of the problem is that, number one, we paid for his education, and even in spite of paying for his education, he was not able to make even one person that has been let go a keeper. And I think that's tragic. You know, if a coach in the NBA had that kind of record, they would have fired him long ago. I suggested last month that a survey be conducted, but I've been told by many of my friends who are teachers in this district that a survey will not work because there is no trust from the faculty and the staff that the survey would be anonymous. So, you know, that would probably be a waste of money. Another concern that I have is the lawsuits. You know, they happened, and some of them have been settled, and some of them haven't, and so forth. You know, why have we not heard of this in the paper or seen any dollar amounts? My next question is, Mr. Adamson, will he be our next one? You know, we all know what was said while Mr. Adamson was let go, but I don't think there's too many that believe it. If you want a true picture of Mr. Orr and his style, just look at Paige Woods. I've known that family for years. Twenty-six years of faithful and unblemished service, and she can no longer take the chance of working under Mr. Orr. What did he say about her service? Maybe it's a good thing she resigned. Never once thanked her for her service. This is the true Mr. Orr. The next two comments I'd like to address are to the board. One of my main concerns as a substitute teacher and as a teacher were educational minutes. Number one, we all know educational minutes are limited. Too many minutes are being wasted dealing with behavior issues of which there are no consequences. And phone issues. Technology is great, but technology needs to be in its place. And when I taught, I told students they could use their phone. If we were Googling something or wanting to look up something, that was fine, but if I saw it, I got it, okay? If it wasn't supposed to be out. My experience has shown that we're wasting 20 to 25% of educational time. We can't afford to lose those minutes in class. And last, my question is, who loses? When parents are in uproar, administrators and teachers are worried about their jobs, and the district's in a shambles. Our children and their education. No teacher can teach worried about her job. Her focus should be on all of our children sitting out there trying to get an education, not on, gosh, is this, is referring this student on behavior going to get me in trouble? Is that going to get me fired? Am I going to lose my job? So my last thing says, we should always put the children first. How long have our children and their education been on the back burner under Mr. Orr? Children and education can't work under Orr. The focus will not be there. So again, like Mr. Reynolds, I'm calling for you to do the right thing and fix this problem. And I don't think it's enough to say, well, he'll only be here another year.
Thanks, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you.
I'm straight off the way, and there you have it. Just being polite over here to write this. There was some confusion for my reason for being here tonight. I was confronted in the front hall and told I wouldn't be presenting agreements. I understood that. That's why I included in my... I understood that, that's why I included in my email today for every one of you where I gleaned the information about how I go about appealing his ruling. I don't know the reason for confronting me. I included the same thing, I read the email that Mr. McKay sent me after. I included that same provision as to how we go about this. I don't know why you confronted me in the hallway and told me I won't be doing that. But I just need, I sent all of you an email, and my understanding is I have to do this also in writing, so who would I hand this to? From my understanding, it's supposed to go to the board.
Okay.
The next thing is, reiterate the nonsense. I can attest, you have to worry about your job. If you report wrongdoing or have concerns for safety, I have emails to prove that I addressed that to Ms. Brown. We had meetings. I have other employees who have left. That whole school order, they only have two employees left. They've all left from last year, or and or were let go, which would be concerning. It's not working out together, as an employee, as a student, anybody associated with this. I would do the same thing, ask you guys to cut the head of the demon off.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? No? Okay, good. Then I'll need a motion to adjourn regular session.
Motion.
Ms. Perry made a motion.
Second.
Ms. Ty, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we need a motion to go into a closed executive session to discuss proposed or pending litigation against the school district pursuant to KRS 61.8101C. Motion. Ms. Perry made the motion.
Second.
Ms. Ty, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion.
Carries.
I'll second.
Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Ty, motion, reconvene regular session.
Motion.
Reading.
Second.
I'll second.
Norman, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
And adjourn, let's see, no business was conducted, uh, in a closed session, so a motion to adjourn the regular session.
Motion. Second.
You carry, all in favor? Please say aye. You are adjourned?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.